Item D1. Mr. Dugan.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, Matt Dugan, Planning and Zoning Department. I've got the 2016 Annual Report for Imagine Austin, as well as a set of proposed amendments. I'll go ahead and get through the Annual Report, then we can spend more time on the proposed amendments and any discussion or questions with those. So for Imagine Austin, we're still trying to go about implementation on five different levels: education engagement, internal alignment, the regulations, capital investments, and the partnerships. Really, the capital investments and the regulations are really the two direct levers the city has, but we're also trying to do stuff on the other efforts as well. So in...last year, we did six Imagine Austin Speaker Series. I've really grown out the Speaker Series and am certainly going to use it as a tool for some other departments doing planning efforts as well. There's a picture of Anshui Akom who came here in November, talked about equitable development and sustainable development. Other speakers we had this year included LCRA and Austin Water, talking about water planning issues. Great Cities, Great Streets with Victor Dover. Oklahoma City Mayor Mick Cornet on how Oklahoma City lost a million pounds in the value of parks to cities by Ajea Biagi. For internal alignment, a couple of the things we did was the Connecting Children to Nature project. Something the Parks and Recreation Department is working on. It was a partnership and then received a grant for...to do a plan so that all children have the opportunity to play, learn, and grow in nature. Once this plan is done, it'll give us a better understanding of the gaps, barriers to connecting children to nature in Austin and trying to create solutions to those gaps. For regulations, of course, we have the work of Codex, who is...they've issued a number of issue papers throughout this year. One of the other issues, things we had, was the accessory dwelling units. Late last year, those regulations got lessened based on lot size and parking. If you're located within a quarter mile of an Imagine Austin activity corridor, that reduced...that eliminated the parking requirement as long as that activity corridor had transit service. For the capital investments, I think one of the things that worked out really well this year is the joint working group between members of the Planning Commission Comp Plan Committee and members of the Zoning and Planning Commission, formed a working group to go through and help out, identify the recommendations for the long-range CIP strategic plan. Other things we did this year were updating to the sidewalk master plan. And then also Watership Protection is working on... working with their flood mitigation task force, and they should have recommendations for that. They'll be coming to you all later this year. And then the final one is partnerships. One of the partnerships we really liked this year was kind of the continuation of working with the local American Institute of Architecture's chapter and their Divine Voice Group. They do really good work. So we had the second and third series, what we call Walk the Talk events, where we had a panel discussion in a certain part of town and then also had kind of a foot-walking tour of examples of missing metal housing that were located in the surrounding area. So with that, I'll go back and I'll talk about the proposed amendments. So this year, there are five proposed amendments. So the first is for Colony Park Master Plan. So Colony Park Master Plan was adopted, so we need to make sure we have Imagine Austin in line with that adopted Colony Park Master Plan. So adding a new neighborhood center to the growth concept map with the boundaries determined by the Colony Park Master Plan and then adding the Master Plan to Appendix G in Imagine Austin as an attached plan. The next one was for the South Central Waterfront Vision Framework. We're adding a new regional center to the growth concept map with the boundaries determined by that planning effort and then also adding that as an attachment to Appendix G. Activity corridor on Guadalupe Street from 29th Street to 51st Street. This is one...this came to us from a resident. We actually missed this. I missed this during the development of Imagine Austin. But that segment of Guadalupe Street is not actually designated as an activity corridor on the growth concept map. It is an existing core transit corridor. It is identified for high-capacity transit, but it was not identified as an activity corridor. So this is to fix that mistake. The fourth one is a Vision Zero Action Plan, adding that as an amendment...not as an amendment, as an attachment to Appendix G. And that was the action plan that y'all saw, I think, in March. And then the fifth one, age-friendly amendments. And this came from the Commission on Seniors. And actually, Peter Fratransian is here, in case I don't have any problems to answer questions. But they had...they recommended two additions to Imagine Austin, one would be in a policy and the other being in action to address age-friendly issues. Yeah, so that's the five...those are the five amendments that are proposed for this year.
All right, so that is our staff presentation on this year's Annual Report to go to council, which Mr. Dugan has outlined the specific amendments within it. Any questions on this briefing and possible action? All right, and we go down the line. Commissioner Zeragosa.
Good evening. So some of my questions are just procedural and then I have substantive questions. So the procedural part, and I think you likely have gotten calls also about the specific stretch of Guadalupe. And so I guess my question is, when there's a change like that, that it's fairly specific, is there a process by which you inform either contact teams or nearby residents that something in there in Imagine Austin that affects them is about to be heard?
Yes, so for...so for Planning Commission, although it's not a public hearing and it's not noticed, at council, it is a public hearing and it is noticed. So notice went out late last week to all the neighborhood associations. I think there's 554 right now. So they'll all receive notice of that amendment as well as all the other amendments that are proposed for this year.
Okay, so they've likely just not received them in time for this hearing?
I know some people have because I got calls yesterday on them.
Okay, so maybe it's in the process. So then this is my next question, and I don't know if...who would answer it. But I saw the same item is a public hearing when it's at council. And even though it's slated for action with us, it's not a public hearing. How is that determined?
So my understanding, and I don't think anybody from law is here, but my understanding is that's by charter. So in charter, city charter spells out and Planning Commission is responsible land use commission for the comprehensive plan. So it has to come here for a recommendation and then go to, I think it's actually City Manager, City Council. And then when it gets to City Council, it has to be adopted by a public hearing and any amendments to it have to be done at a public hearing as well.
So it's because the charter doesn't specify that even though it comes through this body, it wouldn't... does it preclude a public hearing or it just doesn't specify if there will be a public hearing? Just so I understand it.
I'd have to check with law on that. I think it's...I think it just doesn't state that.
It doesn't state that there must be a public hearing even though it has to come through this body? Okay, and then maybe that's something that when we talk about our bylaws... I know we keep sort of talking about briefings and how we handle them, but this, to me, seems like a situation where public input would have been preferable. And then to my substantive questions. So once a year, you review Imagine Austin. Is that correct?
Well, we gather the...we report on it once a year, the progress.
You report on it, okay. And I'm wondering if you could put a picture of the growth concept map up. I know it's likely...do you have the ability to do that?
While he's going through that, I'll just kind of give a little background on...in the past, each year, we do... we have this moment where typically it's gone through the Comp Plan Subcommittee. And the Comp Plan Subcommittee has been working with staff on like the report that would come forward. This year, with our whole kind of big switch from the subcommittees to the joint committee, the joint committee has not grabbed a hold of it in the last couple of months. The Comp Plan Committee has not met. So in that switch, there has not been that same connection this year as a part of the report to council. Why, you know, we have the joint committee now and they have the opportunity...and they will be meeting in August before this goes to council. So there is still opportunity. And there's...we should...I think it's kind of imperative that the Comp Plan Joint Committee, one of the first things that they do is they look at this report that's going to council. And it's an opportunity to discuss it and also how to... how will that body, that group of individuals between Zap and PC, be preparing each year the updates to council as a collective of both our boards? Because that is different than how it's been in the past. And I think it's...hopefully, it's a better process than we... I'm not saying the process in the past is bad, but hopefully, it's an even better improvement on that. Next year is the five-year report, and that's an even bigger one than we've had. The five-year update's a big deal.
Yeah, that will be a big deal. I think that would help because last year, we also...we didn't get to work with the Comp Plan Committee.
Right. And in the past, we've had a lot of items that have been clerical in nature or even there was a time where we wanted... there was discussion of rewriting portions of a page to make something even more clear. And so these kinds of things come before this body each year. So this is not abnormal that we're doing this.
Okay, now, thank you for putting up the map. And it's still kind of small, but hopefully, people can see it. What I want to bring up is something that is not just a clerical or, you know, a small portion of a corridor. When we got the report saying that Austin is the most economically segregated city in the U.S., I couldn't help but look at our growth concept map that was thought of before we had this information and before it was clarified so succinctly. And I can't help but notice how west of MOPAC... anyone just moving to Austin and looking at our growth concept map would think that it's just fields, open fields, west of MOPAC. And not only is it not open fields west of MOPAC, there is a lot of development occurring west of MOPAC. And it is development that we are not guiding through the principles of Imagine Austin because we are silent on that whole portion. And I'm so glad there's time, you know... and even if there weren't time, I think we should take time. I think the Subcommittee should look at that and should really evaluate the centers that are currently centers west of MOPAC, that have Randalls, that have HEB, that have all the services, that already have multifamily around. We should be identifying those centers. We should be identifying those corridors and plan accordingly, all with the very clear understanding that we're dealing with environmentally sensitive areas. But just being silent on it, I don't think it's good for the city and I don't think it's good for that part of town. We should, more than anywhere, be thinking of complete neighborhoods where people can potentially not drive seven miles to HEB Plus and maybe walk or ride. So I just hope there's support in this body for sending this to our Subcommittee and really look at what we need to do to at least reflect what is on the ground west of MOPAC and plan for future growth with the current entitlements that are allowed.
Thank you.
So that's...
All right, who else had hands up going down? All right, Commissioner Seeger.
I have a basic question. Sorry, I always forget that. Thanks, Matt, for your help in this. What is the substantive difference between a core transit corridor and an activity corridor? They seem to be very closely aligned.
Yes, I would say they're very similar. And the core transit corridors are one of the things we looked at to try and figure out which roadway should be designated as activity corridors. So for an activity corridor, it's in the comprehensive plan. It's, you know, it's like an activity center, but it's linear in nature. So it's really trying to do two things. And one is accommodate future growth and development. And then two, to kind of connect it to other centers or other important features. For the core transit corridors, those are actually spelled out in the Land Development Code. I believe there are 20. So there's a specific designation in Title 25 of a listing of those core transit corridors.
So when we look at it in the context of Code Next, is an activity corridor more dense than a CTC?
That I don't...I don't think there's numbers that go along with core transit corridors. If for activity centers, the number range... there's a number range that goes along with them. But again, the number range is one of those difficult things. And even during the creation of the plan, we had problems with. So we had to assign growth and job numbers to the centers and to the corridors so that we could place those... and the community could place those on the map to figure out where do we want people to go and where do we not want people to go. And then, once we had those, we could actually run scenarios. But you had to have numbers in order to run those scenarios, and then they produced indicators. But then, once we had that, then we had the hybrid map and then worked through all of that and came up with the growth concept map. You know, in some ways, the number range has lost a little bit of significance. You know, it's one of those things in Texas, we can say, hey, go here, don't go there. But we can't say...you know, kind of the power of the Comp Plan is really to guide and to nudge. You know, for example, if you had a center, and it was a circle, and there's an intersection that went through it, and somebody came in and, you know, it says a neighborhood center, so you wanted, I don't know, say, 1,000 residents. And somebody came in at one quadrant and built one resident, one structure, you know, we couldn't go to the next quadrant over and say, well, hey, now you've got to really build way more than you originally planned on building to make up for that other quadrant, only building one. You know, we can't. We can't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Actually, it's birds about three or four I'm going to hold back on. Commissioner Knuckles.
I'm looking at Section 2.2 of our Rules of Procedure. And it says, "The Commission shall use the following order of procedure for zoning cases, subdivisions, and proposed amendments to the city's development regulations or comprehensive plan." So it appears to me that at least the Commission's own rules of procedure require a public hearing for a Comp Plan amendment.
Okay.
Would you mind revisiting that with the Law Department?
Sure.
And on top of that, I think if we want to have a public hearing on it, we certainly can. Nothing's prohibiting us from calling a public hearing. Thanks.
Commissioner White.
First off, thank you for this report. I'm glad to see the age-friendly amendments on here specifically. As far as the...I have some concerns about having this conversation and making a recommendation without a public hearing, specifically talking about the Guadalupe Street. It seems like if our job...if our specific job is to make a recommendation to City Council, then we should be having some sort of public conversation. I understand in the past that Comp Plan kind of vetted through this ahead of time. I think that with changes like this, it should probably go to small-area planning as well. Maybe specifically this amendment or other amendments like this. But it seems like there was so much effort put into the public input that went along with Imagine Austin. And if this...perhaps it really wasn't oversight and just didn't get included in the original plan or maybe the public input didn't push for that in the original space. But it seems like to have...I think that at some point in the plan, it says that we've won five awards for the amount of public input that we got on making this plan in the first place. It seems like the amendments should have at least a fraction of that kind of input as well. So I hope that that's something that we'll talk a little bit more about, what that looks like specifically for this recommendation, but also for future processes.
Yeah, I could definitely see that, especially if it was... if it was one that didn't make sense or if it was one that kind of came out of the blue, you know, we would definitely want... that's not something we would ask for. That was something that, you know, we'd say, hey, hold on. This needs public input. For this one, you know, being that it is a mistake, it is something that we need to get corrected. For the neighborhood plans, you know, nothing will change with the neighborhood plans. The only way a neighborhood plan would change is if council takes action to change that plan. So there's no changes to the neighborhood plans along that area.
Others with questions or comments at this point? Okay, is there a motion to move this forward or to...with certain stipulations? What are we thinking? And also, because there's been a recusal as part of this, I want to go ahead and throw on the table. I asked Andrew about this earlier. We can divide the question on this one. That's a technical term I picked up tonight, that we can vote on the report and then the specific amendments separately from one another. In that case, Commissioner McGraw, who recused herself from the Guadalupe portion, you know, she's able to recuse herself, but without... but still be able to be up here and speak on the other portions of this important business. Commissioner Zeragosa.
I would make a motion that we ask the Comprehensive Plan Joint Committee to look at this report with an eye towards not only the amendments that are proposed, but also the growth concept map and capturing the centers and corridors west of MOPAC. And...
I think that would need to be a separate item from this. Well, I don't know, maybe not...
Amendment to the comprehensive plan report.
I mean, if it's...if we're asking for in this year's report that there be language that is put forward to council, that is directing staff to look at the growth concept map in... I don't know, but maybe it's in preparation for year number five and the update, which staff may be already preparing anyways. I don't know that, but...
That has not started.
Okay, so, I mean, going back to some of Commissioner Seeger's comments, I mean, so much of this comes back to resources. And even we heard testimony earlier tonight in Citizens Communication, you know, resources to look at planning efforts. I think we all know that there are things that we need to be doing and preparing for Code Next and the mapping of the city and how we look at these nodes and what kind of planning efforts go behind the eventual, maybe form-based code that goes with it. So we know there's a lot of work to do. So maybe there's a portion of what we include in the report, we ask to have included in the report, is thinking forward toward year number five of work that needs to be done so staff maybe has more resources to start to tackle that portion of the challenge.
And I would leave it to the work group to sort of decide to what degree to be specific on their recommendation. But I personally am participating in Code Next. I feel like if the grander...or the high-level structure is flawed and we're looking at it through that lens, I worry about the specifics that are coming out of Code Next. Like if we're looking at the environmental regulations and thinking, maybe they don't apply west of MOPAC because nothing is planned west of MOPAC, we might look at those differently. So in my mind, it would inform the work that is happening right now if we knew there was a vision towards planning for that area also. And I hope this doesn't sound hyperbolic, but in my mind, the way that I, 35, used to be treated, it appears to me, when I look at this map, that that's the way we're treating MOPAC. And I think that's a real problem. So I would say sooner rather than later to start those conversations because I'm sure they're long and lengthy and they won't...we won't come up with a list of streets from the Subcommittee work. But as far as the Subcommittee can take that discussion, I think would be of great value.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to look at the relationships of activity corridors to one another. You know, when one activity corridor stretches out to nowhere, but then there's four or five in close proximity. And I know we have a...there's just different issues that those suggest from a transportation standpoint, from availability of services, from housing. I mean, there's some parts of town that are incredibly busy that have no activity corridors. I mean, 620 on here is not an activity corridor, but Palmer is. So it's just like, what does that mean? Anyways, just different thoughts of that philosophically starts to make you think from a planning standpoint.
So I was making a motion.
You're going to do a motion. I'm getting in your way.
Oh, no, 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 that's good. I'm glad, and it's not fully thought out. So to send it to the Comp Plan Joint Subcommittee with an extra task of looking at that issue, sending also the street...the portion of that Guadalupe corridor to Small Area Plans, as Commissioner White suggested, and to bring it back to us, not put it under briefings so we can make it a public hearing. I know when we had the joint training, we were told if we put it under briefings, we can't have public testimony per bylaw. So we'd have to just post it differently on our agenda. So that would be my motion unless somebody has some added thoughts.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Zeragosa, seconded by Commissioner Knuckles. Are there any time-certain issues with this report hitting council by a certain date that is so detrimental that we can't take one more step with?
So the public hearing at council is Thursday, September 1st. And then one thing with the...so my understanding of the new comprehensive plan Joint Committee is, once it goes there, that's its own body. It doesn't come back here. It goes straight to council. So if y'all wanted to make a recommendation on it, then...
But it can come back here, no?
It goes...it's its own board and commission now.
My understanding, because we've talked about this in Small Area Planning, is that as your own commission, because it's already a joint commission and we've been having this conversation, you can decide who you send it to because you, in the structure, in the policy, it says that we make recommendations to both land use commissions and to the City Council. So I believe that Comp has the ability, just like the other joint committees, to send it back here. And we can make a recommendation to them that they do. That's my understanding.
Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Seeger, then Commissioner Shea.
I would like to make a friendly amendment or motion to this is to bifurcate... yeah, I am on. I'm on. Okay, to bifurcate the amendment issues from the further-reaching solution that we're looking for and looking at the growth map, looking at many of the instances, and send them as separate items so that we can get this back. We can get the amendments back and then send it on to council.
Just of note, I think that what you're hitting on is that there's a lot of issues related to the notion of looking at the growth concept map holistically that, from a time standpoint, I could not see it coming back here before it needs to go to council. If it's going to be really, truly... I think it's...that's an ongoing topic with a lot of meat on it that should be chewed on.
Yeah, I think if the growth concept map were to change, that, in my mind, that has to go through the public engagement process. I don't think that's something that could just be done in...
Correct, that's my understanding as well.
I guess I don't envision, as I'm... that we'd come with a concrete set of specific amendments. I think, in my mind, it would be for the work group to start that conversation. And it might just be a recommendation, but I would want it to go with this year's report. I would like for it...the issue to be on record as part of this year's report, but without the expectation that this work group within a few weeks is going to hammer out the expectation that this work group within a few weeks is going to hammer out what Imagine Austin took years to produce.
And that's my thinking too, because all we can really do is say, you know, is the failure to have these centers west of MOPAC a problem? I know we don't want to steer growth that way, but growth is going to happen there, and are we just not planning for that growth at all?
Yeah.
If not, should we be?
Okay, so we've got the motion maker and the second all both agreeing that this is a kind of a generic, that's probably a poor word for it, but this is more of a broader visionary thought that needs to be included in directing upcoming tasks related to next year's report, and that goes to council with this rather than getting into the study right now?
Exactly.
Okay. So does that change your friendly amendment request?
I thought it kind of supported it, but...
Okay.
No, it doesn't. I think the issues are separate issues, and I'd really like us to spend the time on digging into this, because there are many complex issues when you go west of Loop 1. You're dealing with sensitive environmental areas, and you just can't apply the same standards that we've applied to the core of Austin to an area that is one of our drinking water sources.
So maybe there is a new business item that comes up later this evening, or answer the commission, that we direct the joint, the Comp Plan Joint Committee to start taking up that task?
I would like to keep my motion.
That's fine.
And I mean, in the growth concept map, we already have a designation for development in environmentally sensitive areas. And as I said, when I started talking about this, all with a very clear understanding that it's an environmentally sensitive area, but even more so for that reason, we need to be proactive in looking at how growth is happening because it's happening. So I think not... Yeah, so I would like to tie it to this report ideally, if there's the support for that.
Commissioner Shea.
So just to really tie onto that, I mean, I'm intrigued just to kind of let the Comprehensive Plan Committee look at that and see if it comes, you know, see what comes out. If they can do it within that time period, great, but at least they get to study it.
Yeah.
The issue that I have right now with the motion is sending it to the Small Area Plan Joint Committee, because that deals with small area plans, which is already part of the comprehensive plan no matter what. They're all in there anyway. And if we start a precedent that if anything changes, now we have to have, send everything back to reevaluate small plans. I mean, if anything on the Imagine Austin changes, then we have to reexamine everyone. So I'm kind of concerned about the precedents that we're going to create, if that's the issue, because, I mean, as Matt has mentioned, it's not going to change any of the small area plans. Whatever we do on the activity quarters, anything on the comp plan stuff, Imagine Austin, it will not change the neighborhood plans. So with that, I'm thinking just to let the comp plan deal with it because of the precedents this could create.
May I ask Commissioner White her thoughts on this?
I can see Commissioner Shea's concern, and there, I certainly don't want to set a precedent where we're overloading the small area planning, but I think that the small area planning is not called neighborhood planning for a reason. It's called small area planning because it's meant to look at all different types of small areas that are planned. And so I think that although the comp plan is an appropriate place to look at most of this, I think if we're really going to zero in on 29th to 51st Street, that that's a small enough area that this small area planning could take a look at it. I recognize that it's not going to change the language in any of the neighborhood plans, but the idea that this isn't going to affect those neighborhood planning areas seems...
I think, so maybe what we can do is let the comp plan decide if it should be sent here, because I don't want to have it a reactive thing. As soon as something hits, it goes to both. If it becomes something that the comp plan feels it's going to hit it, because it kind of, to me, I think it needs to kind of trickle down to the point where we examine something like that. So parting feels like maybe we should let comp plan decide if it needs to go to small area planning or not.
I guess that would be a scheduling issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're dealing with, we're going to be dealing with a lot of that if we're sending things to two committees a lot.
Is comp plan meeting before small area planning? Probably not, because we're meeting August 3rd.
We're meeting next Monday, sorry, next Wednesday. So I don't know if that can even get on our agenda.
I think that if we're only getting these reports once a year, we're not really setting a precedent where we're going to overload small area planning.
Unless it becomes a public, I mean, so if I was a public, where would I go to at this point? Do I have to attend smaller planning and defend myself there, or am I going to have to go to comp plan, or am I going to go to both? So at this point, I feel like it's confusing. If we know that the neighborhood plans won't change, right, whatever we do, I mean, we're not going to change it to adjust the activity corridor, whether it's called one or the other, because that's kind of a broader issue. You know, so I mean, I think that's more where I'm coming from on this. I mean, there's a concern with, I don't know, kind of what affects the other thing, and as a public individual, I won't know where to go.
Yeah, there's the discussion that would take play, I mean, I think we need to think about what kind of discussion would take place at each body. If we're talking about this report, and this issue is a correction to something that was omitted or however it's characterized, that is the conversation about what is the comp plan saying versus getting into the details of whether or not this specific stretch should be an activity center is a whole, I mean, I don't see that being a short conversation. But maybe that's, I mean, when we talk about the work that needs to go into planning a corridor, I mean, this isn't about planning this corridor, this is about the designation that would lead to something down the road. Commissioner Zeragosa.
And I hope Commissioner Knuckles is okay with this, but now, what I'm thinking is, it's not a super-complex issue. I don't think it's going to be this stretch of road. We're already deciding, the motion already is to have a public hearing here, and then it's going to have a public hearing at council. So I'm feeling comfortable giving the concern about precedence to keep it at, to not send it to small area plans and have this hearing and the council hearing take that testimony and evaluate it.
Well, as I see it, if we send it to both committees, the only precedent we're setting is that, you know, when there's something that changes a corridor designation in the annual comp plan report and amendment, then it goes to both committees. We won't face that circumstance for another year. If we do it this year and it turns out bad, we say, we're not going to repeat that mistake next year. I have no problem with it still going to the two committees.
I have to say, I mean, I could go either way. I mainly want support for the main motion, and I believe that there will be enough opportunity for public input, but...
Commissioner Kazi, and then there was another hand raised that I missed earlier. You had a comment on this.
Yeah, you know, I'm in support of the amendments, and so I would just like to see this move along, so I could support the motion to bring it back here as a public hearing and not complicate it further.
Who else had their hand raised briefly? I saw yours, but I thought there was one other hand raised. No? All right, Commissioner White.
I, since I suggested that it go to small area planning, I just want to make the comment that if it's, if this is looking at it as a broader stroke, and it really only is whether or not this should be included as kind of the grand idea of what this space really is, and we're looking at it as what it is right now, and what that means for the future, I'm comfortable with it not going to small area planning as long as we're going to have a public hearing here before it goes to council.
Okay, so is this going to one or two committees? Motion maker and second.
That's friendly to me, let it go to just one.
Just one, all right.
One, one, okay.
So just going to the Comp Plan Joint Committee, and I do need to note that we need to separate this out between the, specifically the amendments versus the report. I think we still need to do that in order to properly have a recusal up here.
Well, the recusal only relates to one of the amendments, right?
It does relate to only one amendment, but we're not piecemealing the amendments.
Well, you could...
So that the...
We could have one motion that deals with the report and all the amendments but one, which Karen could vote for, and then a second motion has the report and that one that she could recuse herself on.
Commissioner Schisler.
I would think by stating that she's recusing from voting on one of the items, we wouldn't necessarily have to separate them out.
Are we okay with that, staff?
You're the parliamentarian.
All right. All right, then that's how we're going to handle it, and we'll just, you know, deal with it if it's all messed up. All right, so...
Okay.
There is a motion for sending this to Comp Plan Joint Committee, the report and the amendments together, and that the Comp Plan Joint Committee would come up with recommendation language, thinking futuristically towards the growth concept map and other such issues. And then we forgot, and then a recusal by Commissioner McGraw specifically to the amendment on the Guadalupe corridor. Yes?
And just to confirm, to return to our body...
And that this comes back to our body.
As a public hearing.
Right, we need to confirm our dates real quick. So the comp plan is meeting when?
So we need to schedule that meeting. It's normally the first Thursday of the month, but I'll be out of town, so it's probably going to be the second Thursday.
Second Thursday of the month, which happens after our second Tuesday.
August 11th, I believe.
So that means that this will come back to us the fourth Tuesday meeting, our last Tuesday meeting of August, which, August 23rd? Okay. All right. All those in favor of this understood motion, please say aye. Those opposed? Abstaining? All right, this passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to...